Crystal, thank you so much for joining me.
Thank you for having me, Carlin.
Yes, and thank you for stepping up to the plate and to serve the community.
Yes, yes.
So, yeah, I know. And I think that's why this has been a great journey for me because I have, I think we're up to, I think there's seventeen people running.
I believe.
I think I've interviewed fourteen, so we're getting, we're getting close. I don't know if I'm going to get them all, but that's okay. But just seeing everybody's passion.
Right.
Their slant.
Yeah.
Has been fascinating, but the, the foundation is everybody's love for Oketoks.
Absolutely.
You know.
Absolutely.
I believe, yeah, it's not, it's not the pay as to what the counselors get. It's more, I, I look at it more as a volunteer position, but it's, it's certainly appreciated. So, so we're going to follow the same format like we have for everybody else. We've, we'll go through the seven questions. I won't respond much to the, your answers, but we'll chip away through the seven questions. Once we're done this, the seven questions, I'm going to make some notes and then we'll go back and dissect a few things that you said, so. So, Crystal, can you tell us a little bit about yourself and what motivated you to run for town council?
Absolutely. Um, so I was born and raised in a very small town, Alberta. After graduated high school, I moved to Calgary for a couple of years, spent two years there and wanted to get out of the big city. And so was my next stop. So moved here, built a house in Sheep River. It was, it was nice because there was a residential, you know, lot that was for sale here that we could build our own home. So did that. And I've raised my three children in Oketoks, been here for twenty-seven years now.
Wow, okay.
Easy. So I must say I have seen a substantial amount of change and growth and some of it's great. Some of it, you know, I'm like, huh, but um, it's been, it's been a wonderful adventure in Oketoks. And I've run a small business here. Um, I'm a hairstylist, so at the end of the day, I think I've heard a lot from residents. And I've based my business on referral. I, I really haven't marketed myself a lot. I've made a lot of excellent, I think lifelong friendships with residents and people. And Oketoks, I adore Oketoks.
Yeah, yeah, right on. Yeah, I can't imagine anybody that would have their ear to the ground like a hairstylist, that's for sure. So, uh, question number two, what's your vision for Oketoks over the next four years? And what role do you see yourself playing in helping achieve that vision?
Well, my vision is to have strong, slow, sustainable, responsible growth. Using foresight, like thinking about the future, what, what comes next with the growth that we're doing today? I, my, my major concerns are roads and infrastructure and recreation centers for our kids. I hear repeatedly that, you know, I have clients that they can't get their children into swimming lessons or skating time, things like that. Just because it, you know, the population's grown so much and um, just being responsible with our beautiful town and, and the growth is probably number one. And keeping that Oketoks vibe that we have, the charm of it, so that my children who want to stay here have the same beautiful town to raise their families in and keeping it affordable. You know, new, smaller homes, first time home buyers can, to get into the market. Yeah, just, just keeping Oketoks great.
Yeah, right on.
Yeah.
Yeah. In your view, what are the top two or three issues facing Oketoks right now and how would you approach them if elected?
Okay, um, well, the roads, infrastructure, I, I currently have a child that is in HTA thirty-second has been a bit of a nightmare for a while here. I've spoken to a lot of people that are struggling with, you know, Cimarron Boulevard. It's, it's the traffic flow. It's fast. It's, there's families living there that are struggling with the amount of traffic flow. Um, so roads, infrastructure, um, community safety, uh, supporting our RCMP, the fire department, um, and just, yeah, really managing the growth and affordability for people, containing the taxes, um, watching, um, where we're spending our money, right? It's, it's been a struggle for a lot of people economically the last few years. And I think we need to be cautious with how we're spending taxpayers' dollars.
Absolutely. Oketoks continues to face challenges around growth, housing and infrastructure. How do you believe the town should balance development with maintaining its character and livability?
It's a loaded question, isn't it? Um, I feel like we have, the last four years have been a lot of growth. Over the last twenty-seven, I, I should look actually at those numbers, you know, that it feels like we have really boomed. Um, I think we just need to use caution with how quickly we're developing. Parking's becoming an issue, the new areas, um, even downtown, right? Just with the people, which is great. Growth is important in a lot of ways, but um, we, we just cautious, using caution, really. Things, oh, I, I think the other thing is, you know, possibly diversi- diversifying our tax base a little bit. Maybe some light industry that brings in, um, some revenue for the town where it's not all just on the residents and property taxes. Um, I'd like to steer clear of any more franchise fees. That's a difficult one. It's a bit of a hidden tax and um, the tiered water system, which as far as I'm concerned is, it's a little tricky because the more water you use, the more you're paying the rates, correct? Um, but we're also trying to keep the environment in, in, in our minds. So if I have a family of five, I'm paying far more, you know, that, that top tier of the water rates. And, and a household with two in it are, are paying lesser rates. So environmentally, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me that that's how we're, we're doing that. You know, I suppose when you get into council or you get into the numbers, it, it changes a lot of things, right?
Yeah, there's new to some realities that set in for sure.
Relation at this point, yes.
Yep. Uh, many residents want more transparency and involvement in decision-making. How would you ensure residents' voices are heard and represented at council?
Absolutely. So I, I think that we should be transparent and accountable. Um, using plain layman's terms where everyone can understand them in our budgets. Um, posting our vote results, you know, making it very clear and easy to find. I, I find it myself difficult to get online and you have to kind of dig for quite some while to get to the numbers. Um, publishing our agendas, you know, well in advance, uh, with very clear summaries of what were the agendas are. You know, a few days in advance, so people can access that and accessibility to see what's going on.
For sure. Town council works as a team and also with Foothills County and the province. How would you approach collaboration, compromise to get results for Oketoks?
Well, the, the county is, 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 uh, the relationship between council and town and the county has to be clear. It communicate with them consistently. Um, and yes, we collaborate with them on many, many things. Um, again, foresight, I think, talking about the future so that we don't, you know, run into problems when we're growing and the MDs kind of encroaching, like it's, it's, it's a fine line. We have to have very, very clear communication with them and a good relationship, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
If residents remember just one thing about you after listening to this conversation, what should it be?
Oh, I care. Um, I, I, I care about Oketoks. I love this community. I believe that this is our town. I, I personally want to know where my tax dollars are going. I, I will listen. I've spent my life, my business is based upon listening to people, their wants, their desires. Um, I'm, I'm loyal, I'm honest and I'm open. Um, you could probably talk to anybody that knows me and I'm an absolute open book. And so I think I could do a very, very good job at representing the residents of Oketoks.
Yeah, right on. No, that's, that's great. So you said a lot. The, I, I like the strong, slow, responsible growth. Now, I don't know all the, the commitments and everything, but I know that last year, uh, like the growth rate is actually, it looks like it's crazy, but the growth rate was, I think, 1.8%. Uh, I believe that's about a hundred houses last year. Next year, they're looking at, uh, growing at four percent. And some of that growth might not be as obvious because they're pushing out away from Highway two A and all that stuff. But how do you, how do you see, you know, the strong, slow, responsible growth? Cause I feel that sometimes when developers and the town gets in there, that all of a sudden it's like, it, it's hard to manage the speed of growth.
Absolutely. Um, so you're right in like, it hasn't been 1.8% doesn't seem like that much. Now, I live on the side of Oketoks that we have Tillotson going in, right? So I've been dealing with that, like on Big Rock Trail there, which I have to say, I don't understand. I, I'm looking at that and I'm thinking the population of Tillotson by the time it's done. We didn't put it, we didn't really widen Big Rock Trail. I, I think we're going to have another issue in the future, like ten years down the road, what are we going to do with all the traffic there? Um, so yes, it's been 1.8%, but the next ten years, there's a lot of growth. There's, there, there, there's a lot of planning. And I'm going to be honest with you, I don't know exactly how much council has to do with approving what the developer is doing in those developments. Um, or that the number of houses or the types of homes or multifamily or, or density, but um, I'm sorry, I'm going to backtrack a little bit. Again, I, I think that we just really need to think about the future with today's growth. That's where I'm at. And I, because I do feel like it may be getting away on us.
Yeah, I, 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 I think you're right. And it feels, it feels like it's a little bit of a race. Like it's a, like we talked about the, um, and I don't know, I haven't talked, I don't think I've ever talked to the mayor about the relationship with the Foothills County. I don't think I've talked to any counselor, council members about it and I, and I should, I should start diving into it. But I know that they want to be sensitive to what they say publicly in regards to the relationship. Obviously that we, we came to an agreement with the water pipeline, which is great, but it just feels that next year, twenty-twenty-six, everybody's kind of waiting. And once this water's online, it's like pow, let's go, right? And that's including Foothills County.
And, and that is scary. That is scary to residents. That's scary to myself with, you know, water. I, twenty-seven years ago, you know, it was, it was going to be capped, which I understand it wasn't gonna, I understood at that point. It wasn't that the population wasn't going to be capped, like they, they would do something. However, now that we've secured water, that does scare me because it's not a free for all. It's not like, well, let's go guns blazing, you know, that's not what residents want. That is not what they want. And I, for the most part, I can't speak for a hundred percent, obviously of residents. I've, I've been going around and meeting people and door knocking, but it's not just because we have water, we can't just go guns blazing.
Yeah, yeah. No, and I, I figure, I don't know if I've ever run into anybody that's like, yeah, that's, that's good. Cause there's, there's no benefit to the individual, like there's no, uh, benefit to me. Because I think in, you know, with all these, uh, new community, communities, 1.8% growth, while I'm not seeing, I think people might be able to balance it out a little bit and saying, okay, we're seeing this growth. So my tax rates are going down, which is awesome. It's not happening, right?
No.
So there's no, there's zero benefit to the average Oketokian for growth.
Correct, correct.
Schools are more crowded, uh, traffic's busy. If there was some kind of benefit, if there's some kind of plan, here's what we're doing. Here's what we're working towards. If we get a population like this, here's the plan that we have for this unbelievable rec center or this, uh, facility, you know, some kind of, some kind of goal for us as a community that we can work towards, right? If we don't have a, a goal, well, what are we, what are we doing? It's just like, we're, we're growing, right? But that's, uh, that's obviously a whole nother conversation. Now, you mentioned one road that not too many people mentioned about, but I know it's certainly, uh, a concern. Like we've talked about thirty-second time and time again, but you mentioned Cimarron Boulevard. Like what are, what are your thoughts about Cimarron Boulevard? Because?
Oh, you know, I have been brainstorming. I have been researching. Um, is Cimarron Boulevard, I, I feel for the people that live on Cimarron Boulevard because it's now a thorough way from Walmart to Costco, right? And, and, and there's a lot of young families on Cimarron Boulevard. And I, the, the speed does tend to get up there. Um, there happened a couple of accidents. And so how do we tame the traffic through there? Do we need more our simple RCMP, you know, just watching that area? Um, and, and where I'm at in Westmount is another, you know, with this construction in Tillotson and such. It's, it's been feeding traffic down the hill and, and through West Ridge and West Mount area. And so we're getting into residential areas with a lot of traffic. So it's an issue. It is an issue. And I, again, we need to look at the future because we, we can't wait until something happens, right? And, and I, I just feel like that, that's happened more than once in town is that there's a big accident or somebody gets hurt. And then something about that. So in proactive, we, we need to, we, we need to do something. So, and I don't have the answers for that yet.
No, no, and I just, just throwing it out here for conversation. I've often wondered why they can't route the, try to route the traffic to the highway, right? I know that, you know, you just go south. I know that there's probably a few hurdles that need to be jumped in. There needs to be some turning lanes and needs to be able to get the flow going. But you know, if there's a, if there was a future plan for some kind of, you know, ring road or whatever, maybe that highway works into that ring road structure eventually. Like and I, I've, I've mentioned a ring road to some people already and they've, they've kind of like, oh my gosh, really? You're talking ring road? Well, yeah, like if we're looking at a town of a hundred thousand, it's going to have to happen someday. So let's get the plan in place. So we know what's going to happen. I'm not saying we start building it tomorrow.
Right. And, and you're absolutely right in just strictly turning lanes, right? Like the, that going up thirty-second, like I, um, and, and maybe a set of lights or two, maybe just that. At least for, you know, we're getting pickleball court and another school up there. And it, all you have to do is go up there at three-thirty in the afternoon and you'll see where the problem lies, right? When the truck backed up to the Mesa condos and you have sixteen-year-old kids driving like, and I don't believe there's any plan for ten years. Like I, I don't know that there's anything on the docket to deal with that. So we're, you know, it, it's another, twinning that how many years ago would have been a million dollars? Now we're looking at ten. So don't want us as taxpayers to face that in the future.
Yeah.
Like, right?
No, and I, I think that is certainly something that, um, like, and let's, let's be honest. Uh, I think the town has certainly done some construction that was certainly necessary this, this summer. Uh, and they can't, they can't do everything all at once. But at least to have that, that foresight and okay, we are growing, we are moving into, you know, I think sometimes I, I, I think it's kind of cool. We still call ourselves a town and I don't want to change that. I don't know. I don't know. It's just, but sometimes we might still fall under that radar that, well, we're just a town. Well, we're not, we're city. And we have to start making proper decisions for future growth, right? And, and listening to, to potentially new ideas, but I also, I'm guilty because I've been bumping my gums here a lot. And I haven't looked at the area structure plan and I need to get, I need to dive into that and see, okay, what, what is the future plan? Like, do we have one? Do we, you know, and that's, uh, something that I need to, I need to do. So I should probably stop talking.
You know what? It's a lot, right? And when you're running businesses and you have your own, it, it is a lot. It, it takes the entire, it takes a lot of us to put our heads together and, and research these things.
Yeah, for sure. Uh, you mentioned, uh, the parking, uh, not just in, not just downtown parking, but, uh, parking in newer areas. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Well, you don't, it, it's, it's really beginning to be no different than going into the city, the big city. We, you put in row townhouses or duplexes, things like that. Like, um, you know, in Dart, DRC, there's, there's places that you can only get one vehicle through the, the streets up there. And, and great, we, we sweeted those, those duplexes. Um, but people are struggling. If you have numerous people living in one home, um, where do they park, right? And then downtown, I have had a few people talk about accessible parking, which they're not wrong. It's, it's difficult. I love all the little shops downtown and we're getting pretty darn busy on the weekends down there. And accessibility can be a bit of an issue. I have a mom with Parkinson's disease, so it's close to my heart. Um, I don't know what that brings. So, um, people purchasing in Wetterburn, you know, they have one parking stall and, and the one outside for, for visitors, which, um, I believe like they can't even, that the extra parking stalls are already, um, purchased, right? They can't get another one. So, um, it's an, it's an issue that the big cities have. It's an issue that a lot of places have. Oketoks, it's just, it's something that we're now all of a sudden bang with these new developments we're facing, we're facing that. And I, I'd like to address it in some way. I'm not quite sure how because you can't, you know, the streets are, are public property, right? So you can't say, well, that's my parking spot, but, um, that goes back to the developers too, right? The, at the bottom, at the, it's the bottom dollar. What are they going to make? So?
Yeah. And that's certainly, yeah, that, I think that's been all like a common problem, but I think, I think you're right. I think it's getting worse. Like even like a Crystal Shores, I don't know if you've ever driven around Crystal Shores Drive, like the, the houses that back the lake and all that stuff. Uh, in the winter, when there's cars parked on both sides, you can barely get one car through as opposed to two. And yeah, and I think that, you know, we do, like, we do have lots of room that we can utilize. Um, and it's just using it properly, right?
And well, and back in the day, the lots were, you know, they were fifty feet wide, right? Like we had, and, and we're getting away from that and it's, it's a struggle.
Yeah.
And do we, to get away from that, right? How much? And should we go up? Should we? Underground parking, I'm not sure, Carlin. I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, I think the, the, the DNA of our communities to, to this point have been, you know, great access to the river. You know, there's, there's trails, I, I go for runs and bike rides with the kids and all that stuff. We always end up down by the river and it's easy, easy access. But I always, I always come back to like that Drake Landing is such a, a nice community because of a lot of the houses back green spaces. There's, there's parks and I also think that enhances community for, for kids, that's for sure. Like I feel, I feel, I don't know, I feel like Drake Landing is just a little bit different because it's kind of like the old days when kids are out in backyards, playing around and the parents, not, I'm not going to say that the parents don't care. The parents are not as stressed as, you know, other, other communities, right? And someone also said that, you know, Oketoks is also a place where they still see kids out playing by themselves. And you don't see that in the city, right? So.
Don't, yeah. And that is Oketoks, right? That's what, that's what we all love about Oketoks. It's coming home.
Yeah.
Right? You, people come home to Oketoks and that's the best. And you mentioned the river valley, you know, that's important, like keeping that, like, oh, looking after it, looking after what we have.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then the deer will become an issue more and more and more with the more traffic, more population. And that's, that's difficult. We, we have altercations on the regular with the deer. I'm not sure if, you know, I know they've looked into, um, is it the PZP shots where it's, it's almost like a, a, a birth control with the deer? It would be costly. Um, but I am concerned about the deer population growing. It's, 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 it's growing and they love Oketoks as much as we do, so.
Yeah, and there's obviously so many different ways, like there, there are elements that I do like seeing the deer. Uh, it's, it's pretty cool. People from, uh, come, uh, from out of town, they're like, oh my gosh, the deer are so cool. And yeah, but then you see all these ugly fences going up to block the deer from going in to pick out your flowers or whatever. And those, that's a minor inconvenience. Um, I don't think we're doing, personally, I don't think we're doing any justice to the deer and saying, well, they were here first. I think we're putting them in harm's way. We see a lot of injured deer. It was heartbreaking. The other day I saw the deer, uh, in Drake Landing that had that tomato wire stuck around its head and down on its body. And, you know, fish and wildlife are, are dealing with that, right? Plus, you know, there's also people that have been injured by the, the, the deer and, uh, you know.
People and, you know, our domestic animals, my, my kids, their dog was, um, attacked about a month ago by a, a mother. She was, you know, there was, there were babies there, but, um, the dog was seriously injured. And so it's, it's, it's an issue. We, you know, we definitely need to address it for the deer and for, for us, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
You mentioned something that is foreign to me because I don't, I don't, I'm going to show my ignorance on it. I don't know what you mean by the franchise fee. Can you talk about that?
Well, that was on, I believe that's on our gas. So that was a couple of years back and it was just, I, is it a franchise fee? Like a delivery freight fee that goes, leave to the town? Um, and it, it's, it's, it is another tax, right? Like that, that just, it, it's another tax.
Yeah, for some reason I thought you were talking about that being a franchise fee for getting a, a new business or something in town. I thought that was an extra tax, but okay, yeah, I see.
Not sure if I should, if it was a rider or a franchise.
Yeah.
Make that.
For sure. Yeah, no, that, that certainly has come up in other conversations as well as to, okay, what, you know, what's, what's going on here? And yeah, I certainly like your vision for the, the light industry and going after some industry. And, uh, I do think we maybe had shot ourselves in the foot a little bit with that population cap years ago and not really allocating the proper enough, proper amount of land for industries. So they kind of all headed out to all their side, right? There's, there's certainly that industrial area there, but I do think that, um, industry, certain industry do want to be close to a community for many different reasons. Um, exposure, you know, people using their business or whatever. But, um, yeah, it's certainly an area that would be nice to lessen the tax burden off of us.
Absolutely. And keeping some jobs around here, right? So people aren't having to commute into the city. That would help with even traffic. It, 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 you know, way, it, it would be nice to be able to keep a few more people right in Oketoks.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Is there anything you want to leave the listener with today, Crystal?
Oh my goodness. Um, no, uh, nothing other than what we've already discussed, that I want to act what makes our Oketok special. And, um, support our families and small businesses and the river valley and, um, just deliver smart, affordable, slow growth. And listen, I'm, I'm here to listen to them, absolutely, and take everybody quite seriously. I know we can't, we can't always appease everyone and make everyone happy, that's for sure. But I will darn well do my best to come to a happy medium for everyone involved.
Yeah, no.
I think at the end of the day, we all want pretty much the same thing, right?
I think so. We want to, we want our town to stay safe. Obviously, the, the news in the last week with that shooting was very disturbing. I know that that has happened before in town and it will happen again.
Yeah.
But it's, it's those things that, you know, when, when bad things do happen and bad things are going to happen in our community. It's always amazing to see how our community does pull together and we support each other. Like I look at the, you know, the food bank and what goes on. Like I look at the, you know, the food bank and what goes on there and then all the other organizations like, uh, you know, that are, they're around to support people. And this, uh, is a phenomenal community. I can't, uh, it seems like we have a very high percentage of, uh, community groups and people that are passionate simply just to help other people.
For sure, for sure. And you know what? This, this new adventure that I feel like I'm on right now with town council and campaigning, I, it has actually given me a, a new revived love of people. Like I cannot believe the amount of support from the community I've had. And there are so many good people here. Many.
That's very, very cool because, uh, I've said it time and time again, while I've been doing the podcast, that, that's kind of the same thing. If, if all you're getting from this town, you know, you're not really out in the community, you're, you know, you're going to work and then you come back home. You're doing your own thing, which is fine, but you're, the, the only tidbits that you're getting from are, are what's on social media. You have no glimpse of how awesome this town is. Like you may think it's awesome, but I don't think you have a really good idea until you start getting up there and you, you, you meet the people, uh, even the people you disagree with and you don't have this, it's still, it's that. I would, I would love it if we could build a community where we can disagree and we can get into arguments. And, but we walk away and just say, hey, you know what? I respect you. I think you're, I think you're awesome and your opinion is important. Because, well, even, even for town council, if everybody gets in there that's of the same mindset. I don't know, you might miss out on a few things, right?
Yeah, can get a little tricky.
Exactly. Crystal, thank you. I appreciate you, appreciate you for stepping up and, uh, we will, uh, look forward to seeing you soon.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for doing this, Carlin. That's, it's, I really appreciate it as well. It was nice to meet you.
Nice meeting you too. Take care.
Take care. Bye.